Welcome to the Mound City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 28th at 6 o'clock. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, thanks for coming out. This is our first 6:00 PM meeting, and I don't know if our attorney got the message, but anyway, he'll be eventually here. All right, we got the agenda. Can I get, or do we have any amendments at all?
No amendments.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, and can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Then we got the consent agenda. Does someone want to go through those?
Can you do that?
Okay.
All right, consent agenda, starting with item A, approved payment of claims; B, approved minutes from the May 15th regular meeting and May 15th workshop; C, approved resolution of sponsorship related to Southwest Trails Snowmobile Association; D, approved resolution approving expansion permit for a project at 4870 Edgewater Drive; E, approved resolution approving permits for 2024 Spirit of the Lakes Festival on Thursday, July 18th through Saturday, July 20th; F, approved resolution approving public lands permit for fence in Ruby Lane, right of way adjacent to property at 2567 Emerald; G, pay request number three and final amount for $23,377.25 to buy two minutes roadways; H, pay request number four in the final amount of $3,437.04 to Pembroke Companies for lift station improvement project; and I, pay request number four in the amount of $16,135.27 to Mingor Construction for lift station project.
All right, does council want to talk about any of those? All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, get a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember McInee.
Here.
Councilmember Pugh.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Mayor Holt.
Aye. Does that count?
I think it counts, yeah.
All right, all that passes. All right, number five, we got comments and suggestions from citizens present that their topic is not on the agenda. Does anybody want to come up? All right, hearing nobody, so we'll go to number six, the Be Like Tommy presentation. You guys want to come up? Nick, can you just give us your name and address?
Here?
Yeah, you have to do in front of the mic.
Okay. I'm Kevin Nash, and this is my wife Nicole Nash, and we live at 6044 Hermitage Trail, technically in Minutrisa, Minnesota.
Cool. Well, again, thank you guys for coming out. I ask you guys to come out and tell us about your foundation and, you know, maybe just a brief background of, you know, how it got started, and then also what you got coming up.
Yeah, that would be great.
Cool.
So, yeah, one, thanks for having us. I think it's always good for us, just, you guys have probably seen some things around town, and maybe like a lot of people wonder, like, who are these people, and what is this thing? So, we appreciate the opportunity to talk about it. So, we both, actually, I always start with, so we have four beautiful children. Our oldest is 20, going on 21 soon, and our youngest is a freshman at Mount Wastanka High School. We've got a senior at Mount Wastanka as well. And then we also had, who would be a junior in high school, our son Tommy. So, three girls and one boy. And in December of 2021, the four kids were at the neighbor's house sledding when Tommy fell with sudden cardiac arrest and was hospitalized that night, and he passed away the next morning. So, this community really rallied around us and around our family. There was money that was raised as a result of all this, basically like through a GoFundMe situation. And we kind of found ourselves sitting there with all this money and not really knowing what to do with it. And so, we kind of collectively, as a family, said, "We can't just keep this. Like, we have to do something with it. We have to use it to honor Tommy's memory, but also keep his spirit alive." So, I always like talk about how the fact, like, anyone that has children knows, like, they all have like their own unique thing that kind of gives them, it's like their own little superpower, right?
Yeah.
Well, Tommy's superpower was he had this innate ability to just see people where they were, and he didn't care if they were popular, not popular, tall, small, he like, he just didn't care. So, he would do things like, Nicky was telling me, like, he would like bake a cake and bring it to someone at school, and we didn't even know who the people were. But he's like, "Well, I found out in math class, it's her birthday, and so I just made her a cake." And he didn't even know her, like, they weren't even friends of his. And he had this, he just saw people. There's another story where he was at a party and this girl, he could tell was starting to get really anxious, and he didn't know her, but he could just see her. And so, he went up to her and said, "Hey, do you want to go jump on the trampoline?" And she was like, "Yes." And then we heard this story after, like, from her mom, like, he really saved her in that moment. And so, we developed the Be Like Tommy Project to keep that joy and that spirit and that energy alive and to just keep doing that for other people in whatever way we can. So, the mission of the Be Like Tommy Project is to care for the hearts of others, both physically and emotionally. And so, the physical part's very easy, it's very tangible. We donate AED devices. We've given a number of AED devices to the high school, and we're actually, I'll talk briefly about this event that we're doing in a couple of weeks, where we're actually giving an AED. Jeff Peterson, the athletic director, came up to me and said, "I'd love it if every team we have could travel with an AED device." So, we're going to donate 10 AED devices to the high school, so that every team has one when they travel. And then, as you all know, they're doing a big addition on the high school with the new stadium. When that's completed, we're also going to install an outdoor AED device that's temperature-controlled. It'll be there 24/7 and accessible. And those are a little more expensive because obviously you have to, there's a lot of security things that go into it and temperature-wise. So, the proceeds of this upcoming event that we're doing called Tommy's Olympic Speed Walk are going to go towards that. So, that's the physical side. The emotional side is just how can we help people in the community, right? So, we did this big thing over the holidays last year called Tommy's Trees. We raised $15,000 through a match that we got, $15,000 that we donated to WECAN over the holidays. That's an initiative that'll keep going. I'm really hoping that we can like find a better cost structure so we can really blow it up. But it's a good start, right? So, so there's that, and then we're also working on some other programming to help with really just spread that message of kindness to other kids and the real kind of impact and power that small acts of kindness can have and teaching it to them in a, in a, in a way that's really tangible, right? So, anyway, so to the event that's coming up, so Tommy had this thing, he was a super, like, unique, funny, I mean, part of what, his ability to bring joy was the fact he was just funny, like, he made people laugh. He got out of bed every morning and all he cared about was just making everyone that he came in contact with smile and laugh. And he started this thing where he told us, like, "Mom and Dad, I'm going to be like an Olympic speed walker." And I was like, "I don't even," he's like, "No, if you get this time, you can do it." So, everywhere we'd go, he'd like be doing this walking thing. And I swear, he just did it to embarrass us, but he thought it was great. And so, after he passed, we were like, "We need to do an event and not only celebrate him, but celebrate that unique spirit he had and then raise money for the foundation." And so, this will be our third year of Tommy's Olympic Speed Walk, and it's really not much of a walk. I mean, we start at the high school, we go past his grapes, I don't know if you guys have seen it, it's right in the corner, right there by Game Farm Road. It had a Christmas tree on it for almost three years, so you really couldn't miss it. So, we always stop there, we drop some flowers in the, in the fence line, and then we go back to the school. And then it's just a party, so we've got bouncy houses and face painting and crazy hair and tattoos and all this just really fun stuff for kids. This year, we actually are having a mascot speed walk, so Crunch from the Timberwolves will be there, Goldie from the Gophers will be there, Madonna from the St. Paul Saints will be there. And not only will they like take pictures and sign autographs, but they're also going to compete in the first ever mascot race walk. So, we're excited for that. So, that's June 15th. It starts at 9:00 in the morning, and I don't know, it'll probably go till 11:30. It's really just, it's a quick, fun morning, and, you know, it's done by noon, and everyone can get back to their summer activities, so.
Yeah, it's a funny event, and it's one of our biggest fundraisers as well, so we're trying to get those numbers up. Yeah, and so we have flyers for those if anyone wants to grab them.
Yeah, if you want to hand them out, yeah.
And then, the other event that we always do is we do a Golden Gala in the fall. So, if you're interested, beliketommy.org is our website. We always post all the events on beliketommy.org and then all of kind of what we're doing with the money we raise and, yeah, other work that we're doing in the community, so.
Thank you all for your time.
You guys are doing the trees fundraiser this fall too again?
We'll do the Tommy's Trees again, for sure.
After the Golden Gala?
Yeah.
Okay.
It kind of runs in parallel just because of the timing. We like to do the gala the week before Thanksgiving, because then all the kids that left for college can come, because they're all back for Thanksgiving, so they can all attend. And then the Tommy's Trees thing just happens right on top of it.
Cool.
But last year, we sold over 500 trees, and, yeah, like I said, and we deliver those ourselves, and so, we're going to find a way to make that a little more scalable.
Where do you, where do you sign up for that?
It's right on the, right on the website.
Okay.
And we'll do all the promotions through all the social medias and, yeah, that's a, that's a fun one. That's a giving campaign for us. We don't make any money on that, so pretty much for every tree that we sold, it covered our costs, and then we gave another $10, and then the $10 got matched by a couple other donors, and that's what allowed us to raise the 15,000. So, yeah, that'd be fun to double that this year, too. And I love just seeing, we love seeing all the little trees all over town, and, yeah, we were delivering them to Woodbury and New Brighton, and they were all over the Twin Cities this year. So, so, yeah.
Does council have any other questions or comments?
No.
Well, thank you guys for coming out.
Yeah, no, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
All right, thanks. Thanks. All right, number seven, we got the council introduction, presentation and concept plan from Carl Runk and Jim Gooley, the development of properties at 2400 and 2420 Commerce Boulevard. We got Rita here.
I'm just going to do my brief introduction.
Okay.
Very, very brief. As you all know, but for the members of the audience, I'm Rita Trapp, the city's planning consultant. Just going to do a brief introduction and then have the applicants themselves come forward. City policy number 12 requires or property owners that are interested in having a concept subdivision be reviewed by the council are asked to come and make an introduction at the beginning before they go through the work of doing a preliminary plat or a final plat. So, tonight, we have one of those requests for you this evening. It's for the properties at 2400 and 2420 Commerce Boulevard. The applicants are proposing a three-building, four-unit in each building, so a total of 12 units on the east side of Commerce with frontage on Lost Lake. It's page, oh, I was going to say, it's up on your, up on the screen as well. The purpose of this introduction is to make sure that the council, as well as the community, has an opportunity to learn about what an applicant is proposing, to ask questions, maybe provide some clarification. Council also has the opportunity to suggest some refinements or things that might match kind of the city's vision for the future. Staff did distribute information about tonight's meeting to property owners within 350 feet of the proposed project, so there may be neighbors in attendance as well. And as you're aware, usually neighbors are able to speak on the matter, however, there's no action being requested this evening. Staff has not reviewed it because that's not part of the policy. At this point, we're just here to share the information and have you have a chance to take a peek at it. So, with that, I'll sit down and the applicants can come forward and present their information.
All right, thank you. Carl and Jim, you want to? Can you just give us your name and address?
Great, thanks Rita. Mayor, council, staff, thank you. My name is Jim Gooley. I live at 5496 Lost Lake Lane, right here in Mound. In fact, just walked up to the meeting, it's that convenient. Part of our project is really, involves the walkability of Mound and the importance of that. This 12-unit, it's a townhome-style condominium, and we can go into detail as to why that ended up being in that configuration. But these will be owner-occupied just, just to the east of Our Lady of the Lake Church and right on Lost Lake, right in that sort of what I would say narrow strip of land there that's been owned by the Falnus family for decades. So, we've worked with them pretty much over the past nine months to really realize the dream that Russ Falnus had for this property. He did really, when they lived there and then moved, you know, had the idea of townhomes for this property. So, the family's supportive and very interested to see this move forward. I should also tell you that I've met with the leadership at the church, and they're very supportive of this project. I've been in, I would say, I don't know, six months plus discussions with the attorney for the property to the north, the Lang property, to see if that could be something we could acquire and combine with this. At this point, those conversations are ongoing, and our plan does not include that at this time, but is a consideration in the future. I'd like to introduce our development team. Carl Runk joins me tonight with just an incredible amount of experience formerly with Ryan Companies, great deal of condominium experience, multifamily experience, so lucky to have him on the team. Dan Schaefer is also here, who's representing our builder and has done a number of projects around the lake, just highest quality and best practices. Tim Winton is our architect, who's done projects, again, all around the lake community, Wayzata, and excited to have him on board. He'll go through some of the plans specifically. We have Matt Pabick, who is not here, but he's with Civil Site Group. He's our civil engineer, who was most recently involved in the Artesa project, so very familiar with Mound, the regulations here and whatever, so working closely with them. I should also mention that, you know, over the past nine months, we have met, I can't even count the number of meetings with the LMCD, the Watershed District, the DNR, to make sure that we're doing this in the best way possible for Lost Lake, for the community. We are looking at an extensive stormwater treatment plan that would be above what is currently required, so we feel strongly about not having that same, you know, direct connection from Commerce into the lake. We'll treat that and create a much better environment. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Carl and our team to continue the presentation. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask at any time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you give us your name and address?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, I'm Carl Runk. Address is 441 Second Street, Excelsior. We look forward to your feedback in this introduction format, being the first time we've seen the council here and mayor about this project. If you could turn it to the slide regarding this overall snapshot, but also the next page here on the 2040 plan. We went into great care on understanding the, the Mound 2040 plan that you established and the amendments to it that were just approved a few months ago, and how this stretch of Commerce Boulevard fits into that, being, like Jim said, very desirable and walkable. But also, how can we contribute to the lifecycle housing in Mound? There's a demand that's higher now than ever in Mound and other cities like Mound for people looking to downsize into maintenance-free living, and this is a great site for that, in our minds, being HOA-maintained condominiums that you could walk to downtown Mound, restaurants and shops, and Dakota, the Dakota Trail. So, we really feel like we've hit on what the comp plan calls for, specific to mixed-use developments on the stretch of Commerce with mid-use, medium density, and specifically what Tim Winton will talk about, the architecture, that the architecture really adheres to the character you're looking for in downtown Mound as well, as an extension of downtown Mound with pitch roofs, walk-up units, and just overall desirability to contribute to this part of Mound. So, I'll turn it to Tim to talk about, look forward to your questions and comments.
All right, can you give us your name and address?
Good evening, Tim Witten, Witten Associates, architects in Minnetoka. Good to be here today. If you could pull up the site plan. Go down one more, I think.
Give me some of the lights.
Keep going.
Oh, Jesse.
Keep going.
Can you get the light down?
Down a couple more.
Just dim it a little bit, the lights.
I don't know.
It's just a little bright.
Is there, do I have a mouse?
Do you want a laser?
This one?
This one.
Oh.
Or the yellow button.
All right.
Did you want more?
That's good.
So, I can move the page now?
No.
Oh, okay, just the, just the button.
Jesse.
All right, perfect, thank you. Uh, yeah, a couple more pages to the site plan. One more, I think. There you go.
That's great.
As you can see, the, the site is quite narrow, and first thing we look at when we design is try to figure out the parking. And with really less than 60 feet in depth, that means we can't do double-loaded structured parking, so it's single-loaded. So, that tells us that we have some limitations. We also made a commitment as a team that we're going to have two parking spaces enclosed for every unit.
Yeah.
And that was an absolute given. We started looking at townhomes, conventional row homes, but as the, as we lined them up, they were all connected, and it, it didn't work particularly well with the parking. The parking was going to make it be a condo anyway because it's common. And so, we went from that and, and studied a little bit further and found that with two stories of townhomes, living space, we didn't really have enough on the main floor, and we had really too much on the top floor. And so, it wasn't really satisfying the market that, the target. So, it didn't take us long to kind of say, "Let's look at this a little bit differently and look at it as, as separate buildings." And so, we have three separate buildings that are four units in each building. And so, there would be the row of parking here, and on the lowest level, it's a slope site, kind of like a reverse tuck-under condition, so it's low here, high here, so our really garage is below grade. And then we have on the, at grade level, we have two flats, and then we have two flats above that. And so, we really have a common entrance. And so, as we come in from the street, we come down, we enter into the structured parking. We actually continue here, have an enclosed space where we connect to the next parking space. So, with the flats, it was pretty much taking care of our, our, our design issues and designing to empty nesters and downsizing as you had a category in your 2040. So, if we could move up to the next slide, oh, the other way. Pat, yeah, there you go. So, this gives you just kind of a concept of what we're looking for here. So, this is actually a four-unit building, and this is the parking I described, where we have two parking spaces for every, every flat. What's good about this compared to the townhomes, the townhomes, we had to have an individual elevator for every unit. We had to have an individual stair for every unit. We were taking away precious space in the parking and precious space within the units themselves by doing that. By having just one common elevator and a stair, allowed us more room. In this particular design, we have, it's a 20-foot wide by 22-foot deep garage. It's really our townhome standard. And then we also have storage space, so it's, it's an ideal situation as far as, you know, this particular buyer. So, this is an example of one of the flats, and every one of them has an owner suite, a guest bedroom, a den, and of course, your kitchen, living, dining. Everything's on, on one level. And this particular plan is about 2,000 square feet, and, and so, the next unit over might be a different size, could be a little smaller, could be a little bigger. And this is the common entrance for that, for all four of them. And then we even have a stair connecting, because they have a terrace for each, private terrace for each unit, stair connecting that can go right down to the boardwalk that eventually gets them to the, to the docks. If we move up one more slide, thank you, very good. So, this would be the view from Commerce, and so, it really appears like a two-story structure. And this is the common entrance, but we're also offering entrances to each of the first level plans. So, in a sense, it looks similar to a row home, and actually acts similar to a row home, it's just that they happen to be flats. Our exteriors are really timeless design. We worked together as a team for this. It's kind of a modern Tudor, so it's kind of a cross between contemporary and traditional. It's got quality materials of stucco, and we have panels, whether that's going to be a hardy-type product, maybe some cut stone at the base. This would be the view from the lake, Lost Lake, and so, we have no view of garages from Commerce, and we have no view, actually, it's covered, and we put windows down here, so you don't see it from the lake as well. All enclosed. So, this would be a flat right here, typical unit, another one above, and same thing, same thing here. And so, they would have private terraces in each case, common access to a stairway that gets them down to the boardwalk. And with that, I think I'm happy to answer any questions, also, just add, you know, get your feedback, or go ahead.
I just had a question, if you can clarify, it was a few slides back, but like what the single-loaded versus double-loaded parking meant?
Yeah, so if you go here.
What the difference was?
No, you gotta, gotta move down to parking. Stop right there, please. Up, there we go. So, in a typical, say, apartment, we would have parking on one side, drive aisle, and a parking on another side. And we need 66 feet minimum to be able to do that. We don't have close to that much stuff on this site. And so, that just tells us right away, we can only do so many units, we all have to have two-car garages, and we're pretty much set with that single-loaded condition.
Okay.
So, and look forward to your comments.
Yeah.
Do you have any, is that, is there any parking for visitors anywhere? Is that where you drive in, is that a couple spots there?
I'm sorry, say again?
I'm just wondering if you have any parking, is that when you drive into the units, is there a spot for visitor parking?
Yeah, so we do have two spots right here, and as this plan evolves, we're going to probably have some smaller units, and in that case, we might be able to, to add some. And then along with the parking along Commerce, I think we're probably okay. So, it's just your overnight parking. Yeah. And there may be a situation we're going to pass to where a lot of these folks that live here don't really only have one car, because it's a second home or a third home, and so, they can allow their guests to come into the structured parking and, and take all of the spots, and we just have to work through that with security.
You guys were going to, they were going to have like common dock access, too, I believe?
Yeah, so, it's a, if we.
I can't quite read it, but.
If we blow up.
Next slide.
Okay, I'll let you answer that.
Sure.
Yes, as it showed on this plan, there's existing open water on the northern side that adjoins with the property owner of the building there. We've, we have an agreement with that individual to have common dock access, and we would then improve the current, there's just a seawall there today with some older docks and disrepair. We would work with him to manage it with our HOA and upgrade the docks that way.
Cool.
But this would be what's shown here, anyway. We've previewed with the LMCD regarding a boardwalk that some of other boardwalks have been done around, around the lake.
And they're, they're willing to go with that LMCD?
The LMCD, yeah, we're, we're too early to make a formal application, but in preliminary application talks with the LMCD and the Watershed District and the DNR, that we're not, we're not trying to apply for a dredging permit, you know, as far as a brand-new area of docks. It's really taking advantage of existing water that is here already.
Okay.
Since he's up here, does council have any other questions for him?
I don't think so.
Well, I think you, I think they're beautiful. You know, we've been really spoiled all these years that the Falnus property has been undeveloped as we turn the bend and see the nice green space, so, you know, I'd rather see two, so it's not a wall of condos there, but I'm, I assume. so it's not a wall of condos there, but I'm assuming that probably wouldn't be very profitable for you to just have two sets of eight rather than three.
We were trying to look at height as well in your comp plan guidance with two stories may prefer, versus going higher in that case. The, you know, it's economics, of course, in terms of, uh, the site in that case.
And it's nice that they're broken up, though, I mean, it's, like, the three separate buildings, I think, is appealing. And then you guys mentioned, couldn't remember the exact name of the materials, but, you know, sounded like they were going to be, like, above what would be required, or, you know.
Stucco and.
Yeah.
Stone, and, you know, we're still in the early concept phase yet, but that's, the, the quality is definitely, um, gonna be top-notch what we're proposing with it.
Cool.
And these will be corner-occupied for sale?
Yes, for sale.
So we're not, no rentals? And top-notch, high-quality on the lake? And this is exactly what we're looking for.
Mm-hmm. Um, I, I do wanna express a little concern about the visitor parking, though. Because right now, the east side of the street is no parking. And so the parking on Commerce is on the west side, which would be the church's side. But you're talking to them, so that's good. And, um, and also, you know, we're trying to approach the county on extending what's now the Andrews Sisters Trail, so that it totally encircles the entire Lost Lake, so that it would go down Wilshire and Bartlett and come back on Commerce. So it would come right in front of your development, which would be great. I mean, it fits with what you're doing around walkability and stuff, so that, that would just be.
Anything that enhances walkability further for the downtown area is a positive, in our view, right?
That might play nice with, like, the, with, that they would get to a dock anyway.
Yeah.
But in visitor parking, uh, Tim alluded to it, but there, there is opportunities, we think, within the structure underneath, you can't see here, um, even this space right here. There's a drive aisle underneath right here to connect these two.
Okay.
There's space in there. We just need to evolve the plans more to show visitor parking that can fit there as well, essentially.
The other thing, there is parking on the street.
Yeah, it's, it's on the.
But it's one side.
West side. On the east side, there's no parking.
Every time I go to church, I see the other people going to their church on the right side, right in front of Williams.
I think it's just seven to nine and four to six.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's limited parking?
Limited parking at Commerce on the east side.
You can park there sometimes.
Sometimes.
Only when you go to church.
'Cause that was one of the problems with the Williams side.
And then you've got two docks available for homeowners?
One per homeowner is our target with that, yeah.
So you're gonna have a total of eight docks down there?
That's, well, uh, twelve is our.
Or twelve?
Objective, yes, yeah. And LMCD, 'cause it's nine hundred feet of shoreline on the fault's property, it's one per fifty feet with their rules, that's, that's how we came up with the, the numbers in that way, under shared arrangement with the neighboring property owner.
So this is a concept plan, this is our opportunity to give feedback? We, we talked about parking, that's one thing.
I feel like usually we give feedback about, you know, maybe wanting some nicer building material and stuff like that, but this looks.
Yeah.
I mean, I saw, like, the reference from the other projects they've done in the west metro, too, and like, it seems like it's kind of what we're, what we're wanting.
I love them, yeah.
Yeah, when we come back with a formal application, we'll include, you know, samples, I'm sure that's a requirement, samples of like, what the materials would look like more, so you can see here.
With, with the look of it, I would just say, you know, think of Lake Minnetoka, maybe not too nautically, but, you know, just kind of remember that in the back of your head. Nothing wrong with the current look, but I'm just saying, just remember that.
Yeah, that we're, we're providing access to Lake Minnetoka.
Yeah.
It's a community on Lake Minnetoka.
Right. And I think this will play in nicely to, you know, Artesa around the corner, and maybe potential other things that we do down the line.
Well, it's, it's building a neighborhood downtown, you know, because we have the Villas, Artesa, um, the Aneski's Building, and now this, I mean, it, it creates a nice neighborhood that's cohesive, that you all have a theme around walkability and access to downtown, plus we're gonna do the new city park in that area, too, so.
Yeah, I think the business owners, we would think, would be supportive of more people living in close邻city that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Any last questions? No? Well, gonna thank you for taking your time, energy, resources, uh, to, you know, building up our town, we appreciate it. And also, this is concept, you still gotta go through planning and all the different steps, and, but we appreciate everything you've done to get this far, at least, so.
Thanks for the feedback.
Yep, thank you.
See you next time.
All right. Oh, uh, we're gonna do public, right? Yeah, yeah, I'm just done with him. All right. Uh, I'll open it to a public comment, if anybody wants to give their opinion on it.
I have a question.
Yeah, just come up, just come up and give us your name and address.
I'm Sherri Buescher at twenty-five forty-four North Saunders Lake Drive. I'm curious, I may have missed something in a different meeting, but have we ever talked about retail underneath, living above, so we have more shops?
Not for this property, per se. Probably just, maybe downtown. Um, Artesa, that just never worked out, that was somewhat before a lot of us. Potentially in the future, yes. The, the problem with development as a whole is there's different property owners that own different things, so, like, if you look at the other side of the street of Commerce, um, you know, you, you gotta either get a developer or you gotta get the city, or, you know, group people together to kind of buy all properties and come in with a plan, and then do that. Artesa, I think, was more just a, a dollar amount thing that just worked out for them. I, I do think that that would be something in the future, and we have talked about that with other plans with, there was apartment proposal by Wells Fargo that didn't work, didn't go through, but that, um, I think the original plan had apartments, or, retail.
Original redevelopment plan was to have that, but it, it is not necessarily, it's not easy to do mixed-use development, and you've gotta have the right kind of scale and the market, and I think one of the things we have to think about in Mount is, if we have mixed-use downtown, it may not be retail, it may be commercial uses, like service business, businesses or other types of businesses, but we're not really a, a retail downtown. So that, that's the other thing.
We could be, yeah.
Well, maybe we could be.
'Cause I feel like we go to Excelsior and Wayzetta and other towns to do our shopping.
They're, they're both overbuilt, too, with commercial.
And it depends on what, you know, developers want to develop to, I mean, they all have different pricing, but it's like, it could be retail, commercial, or office, I mean, there's kind of a.
Mix.
Yeah.
You gotta get everybody on board, it's, then you gotta get all of us and planning, and it, it's a challenge, but, um, I, I think we're all open to it, we just have to have, you know, a developer or someone come up and give us an idea.
The right building?
Um, or the city has to out, outsource and, and come and do that. A lot of times, by the city doing that, you have to give them some. And in the past councils, we've not been willing to do that. We actually, way past councils, they bought up a whole town, and then we just sat on it, didn't do anything with it. So we're a little timid to do that again, to buy stuff, waiting for someone. I wa, I'd rather have, you know, if, I don't know if we're getting recorded tonight or not, but, uh, if, if anybody's hearing this, we're, we're open for, oh, now he turns the light on. The light wasn't on all the time, and I was like, huh. That was my note, I was like, oh, our attorney's not here, so. Um, but yeah, I mean, we're open for business in Mount, so we want, we want more of all this.
Okay.
That's what I hear, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you, thanks for the comment.
Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, I'm gonna close that. Um, do you wanna do any recap or anything, Rita, or are we good?
I think we're good.
We're good? So what's the next step for them, then? Oh, whatever.
Yes.
Recap or next step?
Um, so the council introduction is intended to provide an opportunity for you and the public to see. So the applicant's next step will be likely to prepare the types of, uh, applications that they would need. So typically, um, preliminary plat to kind of create that type of a structure, and that would go through both planning commission and council at the time that they're ready to do that. And then, as you heard, they referenced a whole bunch of other agencies that also have to be involved. Um, so obviously, there'll be continued coordination between the applicants and all those agencies on who comes first, uh, in trying to review the various approvals that they would need for the process.
Cool. All right, thank you, appreciate it, thanks for coming up, guys. All right, number eight, we got planning commission recommendation. Uh, A is consideration slash action, proposed two minor, two-lot minor subdivision at property, five-one-two-three Waterberry Road. And Rita has this one, too.
There we go. Good thinking.
See if they keep talking, or, I don't know if I'm gonna grab the door.
Ooh. Right ago.
Thanks.
Interesting. That's the first time that's ever happened. There we go. Okay. All right, good evening again, uh, the application before you is a two-lot minor subdivision on Waterberry Road, as you referenced. Uh, the project is located on the east end of, uh, Waterberry Road by Tuxedo Boulevard. Um, currently, there is a single-family home on that property, um, and that prop, that home was constructed in about nineteen thirty, um, and is in need of repair. The applicant plans to demolish that home and construct two new single-family homes as a result of the subdivision. Um, this one has a little bit more, um, natural features on its site, there is a bluff, um, condition, uh, on the west side of the site. I know it says east, I guess I didn't fix that, on the east side of, on the west side of the site, and there are wetlands both to the south and east of the property. Um, it is a two-lot minor subdivision, they are proposing to create two parcels. One parcel will be eleven thousand square feet in size, and the other one will be thirty-three thousand square feet in size. Um, the intended use for both parcels is construction of a new single-family home. Um, the applicant is, um, meeting the criteria of a minor subdivision for everyone's benefit. The city has major and minor subdivision, a major subdivision involves a two-step process of preliminary plat and final plat. A minor subdivision allows you to just come once, um, through the process and have your plat, um, done concurrently. Uh, the reason that they can do that is that they have frontage on an existing public road, and they don't require the construction of any new public facilities, public street, um, and they do meet, uh, the intents as described in the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. The area is guided for low-density residential, so the two single-family homes, uh, will be in keeping with that guidance. Uh, the zoning is R1A, uh, they are considered a lot of record today. As a result of a subdivision, you always change from a lot of record to a non-lot of record, so they will be held to a higher standard relative to setbacks and impervious surface. Um, as far as the applicant has provided, it seems like they will be able to meet those standards without an issue, so we don't anticipate, and the applicant has not requested any variances, so they are able to construct the project that they would like, uh, just through the subdivision process. Uh, as I referenced, there is a wetland, and the applicant does show a wetland setback, um, on both parcels. They're well away from that, um, the applicant, in the terms of showing the proposed house, there were in the plans a proposed house where it would be located and what it might look like. Um, those are not, um, for-sure, uh, plans, those are kind of what the developer is estimating, what they might show to a potential buyer. If they show something different, they will need to come, um, and revise the plans, and those are the plans that we would be review at building permit time. Any, uh, any application, um, approval tonight only has to do with the subdivision, so the creation of the two lots. You're not approving the actual house, anything along those lines, that'll come through the building permit process. And if at that time they decide they can't meet any of the requirements of the code, they'd have to come back through and have a variance request, uh, at that time. There is also a bluff, and I've shown it kind of circled in red, uh, the applicant should be able to meet the ten-foot top-of-bluff setback for the structure. They are close, but staff is well aware in Mount of dealing with that, so we'll just monitor that, uh, as we move through the process. We did distribute, uh, the application materials for public and staff agency review, as we customarily do. Uh, the only person that really had any comments was the city engineer, who's here today, if you have questions. Um, and they just, uh, referenced the need for erosion control planning, um, so a kind of customary language that we would anticipate. Uh, we did notify neighbors within three hundred and fifty feet of the property. Uh, they were notified both of the planning commission and the city council meetings. Actually, we do not have a public hearing, so we don't have an official notice public hearing, but we do notify. Um, and, uh, neighbors did speak at the planning commission meeting, and they may be here today as well to speak. Uh, the concerns, as we referenced in the packet, a lot of them had to do with the fact that it is a very narrow street, and so it's hard even today to move on the street, backing out of your driveway, there's, uh, people that are parked on that. Um, we are adding one additional house at the end of the street, so it is of a concern for those neighbors. Uh, emergency vehicle access, there was references to blocking of views, uh, construction traffic, and property values, some of the similar things that we've heard with other projects in Mount. Um, the planning commission did consider this at their May seventh meeting, and did have a good conversation with the public. Uh, kind of the, the consensus of the planning commission, uh, was recognizing that narrow streets, particularly on the island, is very common, and that's just something that people have to deal with. We're adding one additional house, we're not adding a lot of additional. Um, the applicant had, um, included multi-car garage, space in the driveway, they've done what they can to accommodate parking off-street, but the reality is, when someone builds, um, and someone moves in, there is that, uh, element that'll have to be addressed. Um, it was also noted at the meeting that the house currently is non-conforming, so any new construction, if that house was taken down and rebuilt, um, and they met the new standards, they would probably be blocking views. And as a reminder, we do not have a view standard in our code, so that's not something that we can really, um, prevent, is where people construct. Ultimately, the planning commission did a unanimous recommendation of approval for the subdivision. Um, so this evening, as I said, the applicant is here, there may be neighbors that would like to speak again, that's of your purview. Um, we do have, uh, a resolution in your packet, since the planning commission and staff both recommended approval. Um, we do wanna note, uh, the applicant has requested, and they can provide a little more information, um, but they had asked that the trunk water and sewer charges be paid at the time of building permit, rather than the release of the resolution. That is something that we have done from time to time, but it would ma, mean we need to make a slight change to the resolution that we drafted for you. Um, it's around condition number sixteen. Uh, so that's something for you to consider, and the applicant can provide a little bit more context to that. That was something that, uh, was forwarded to me, uh, to make a change. Uh, if you don't want to make a motion, obviously, your other two options are to make a motion of denial. Uh, we would want some direction to have staff to prepare that with findings of fact on why we would deny it. Uh, or if there's more information that you need, if you wanna table a request, we can certainly work with the applicant to provide additional information. So with that, I can answer any other questions if I didn't cover anything in the depth that you need.
Does council have any questions, Rita?
What is more typical, like, the, paying the trunk charges at?
The typical is what we normally do, which is that at the release of the resolution, that's when you would pay those trunk fees. Um, but we have considered it at times for smaller types of subdivisions, like this.
I mean, it sounds like something that's pretty minor, it's not like precedent-setting or anything like that.
No, typically, we start with that, because, especially if you're going to do, um, a large subdivision, you want it done and recorded and, but sometimes when we have these smaller ones, um, that is something that's taken into consideration.
How much are trunk fees typically?
Is it two forty or something?
Two thousand a piece.
Oh, sewer, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
All right.
And then applicant, you wanna come up?
Yeah.
All right, just give us your name and address.
My name is Michael Greer, and my wife, Michelle Greer. We live at twenty-eight thirty-five Highland Road in Minnetoka. We've been there for thirty years. Um, I think at the introduction, you know, which was on the twenty-eighth of February, I filled you in on some of my background.
Yep.
Um, our children both went to Mount, we, we consider ourselves Mount residents, we just do, that's the way it is. Uh, anyways, we're excited about it, and we thank you folks for your time, and we thank what the planning commission and, and the Mount's planning staff has done, I think they've done a really good job, the consultant, Rita, for setting the table as to what we're looking to do with the property. Um, we're excited about it, we feel that it's, it's the right project for our size company, this is what I do. I've done this for a number of years, uh, single-family, what I call infill lots. I look for a nice piece of property like this, sometimes it can be subdivided, sometimes not, you know? And, um, I specialize pretty much in doing single-family homes in existing neighborhoods, because I'm not a big builder, I don't do tract homes. And so when I saw this piece of property up for sale, I went and looked at it and fell in love with it, because I think it's a beautiful piece of property, and I thought it's something that I could work with and do a, and a nice job with. Um, so, you know, basically, we've done, uh, what's needed for the administrative side of it. We made formal application for the subdivision, we had the hearing with the planning commission, as you know, Rita just went through that. Basically, we're ready to go, um, the plans, just to clarify, and Rita said this correctly, we just wanted to clarify, that those plans were drawn specifically for this project, I had my draftsman draw it. They fit the setback. that those plans were drawn specifically for this project. I had my draftsman draw it. They fit the setback requirements. They work well with the topography, and they may well be what's built because I am going to put them on the market. I'm not going to build a spec home, for instance. I'll I'll go ahead now if we get approval, and I will market the homes individually, but with the homes that I've designed for each lot parcel I empty. And if the buyer wants that home, then I'll just move ahead with that. But if a buyer comes in and says, you know what, this is really nice, Mike, but it's not quite what our family needs, then I'll just go ahead and draw with my draftsman a custom home for them. So, you know, it may well be this plan, but it may not. That's the only thing. I just wanted to clarify that. But it'll be something similar, you know. It may not be the exact home, obviously. Really, you know, we've agreed with all the recommendations that are laid out in the approval recommendations that the planning department has put together and the consultant. With the only one request we had was number sixteen, and that's not a deal breaker. It's just that I'm used to having the sewer and water charges all in on the permit part when I go to pay for the permit. It's usually the water and sewer charge. If I bought a lot from, let's say it's a developed lot, those all fall under the permitting part. It's not a deal breaker for us, but I'd just like to put it into that. It's two thousand each lot. It does- it's not a deal breaker, but I just thought I would defer that and pay that with the permit when we do the permit part. Other than that, you know, all the recommendations, we have no problem with it. We have had some concerns from the neighbors. You know, we had that when we did our first introduction. I take all those concerns seriously. I've been building for a long time, and I built on dead-end roads in the past. I've built on cul-de-sacs. I've built on open lots. I built on South Minneapolis. I built on a city lot where we demoed a house, and it was five-foot setbacks on either side, where we literally had to haul the fill off-site while we put the foundation in and then bring the fill back in afterwards. So, you know, I'm used to tight sites. I've worked on tight sites in the past. I have experience with that and demolition in the past. I understand the neighbor's concern, but my, you know, I guess rebuttal to that is I've grown up in this community. I grew up in Excelsior. I've done remodeling new homes all over the Lake Minnetonka area, and dead-end roads are not uncommon. It's because of the lake. I mean, let's face it, there's a lot of little peninsulas and bays, and that's what's created these dead ends that we have. And I know it's a dead-end road. I knew that when I went and looked at the property. So I had put together an action plan for how I'm going to deal with that during the construction phase, you know. And I've laid that out on my letters. It's an open letter to the city. If you take a look at it, April third letter that I I sent out. And basically, you just have to be proactive when you're building on a dead-end road. I'm going to make sure all my subcontractors know that it's a dead-end road. I'm going to put up signage about it being a dead-end road. We're going to build a temporary, I guess I may have your little pointer again. Maybe it's up here. Oh, it's up here. Sorry about that.
The yellow button.
The yellow button? So basically, when when we get started, we would demo the existing house. And then I would do, bring in some fill right here in the front where the driveway is right now, and make a parking landing area so that I can have lumber delivered. I can have a dumpster delivered. I can have the people turn around in that area too, and it'll be clear signage for that. So that's the intent of making an area here in front, a landing area, I call it. I may do another one where this driveway is going to come in too, so that we'll have some room to have materials, to have people turn around, to have a dumpster. And so, you know, I have a provision for that. I know the neighbor, Mike Worth, across the street, had a concern about being able to back out of his house. His driveway is right here. But the driveway is offset, so, you know, I did that by design because I believe that he has enough room to back out of his driveway and turn and go back down Waterberry. I measured the street, and the street measure is twenty-six foot six curb to curb. An average car is about six and a half feet per the DOT website webpage. And so that would give you twenty feet to back up without even hitting into a car that it would be. Let's say this family here in the parcel B had a neighbor or a friend over holiday. That would most- there could very well be a car park there, but that still gives you twenty feet to back out of your driveway, turn and go, you know, west out of out of Waterberry. The other thing I just want to point out that, you know, I've taken all their concerns into consideration. I understand it's a dead end, and I understand they have parking concern. However, I feel that the road really isn't any narrower. I went and measured some other roads in the area there, right out in that particular area, and they all measured consistently about the same width. And so I've sent the photo over. I don't know if you had time to download that, but I had a couple pictures. Yeah.
I don't think those are yours, so those are mine.
All right. Right here. This is a good one. And so right here, I'm standing in front of our property looking west down Waterberry. And this is on a typical day. I came there in an afternoon last week, and one of the residents, I believe they're in fifty-one twenty-nine, Zach works from home, and that's the only car that was out on the street. And when you look now to the west, down at the bottom of the hill there is where Tuxedo is. But the road is the same width all the way across Tuxedo, and then it continues on west to the guess to the lake. And there's another dead end on the opposite side, I believe, of I forget the name of that road. Anyways, what I'm getting at is that there is a- it is a dead end. I recognize that. But I want to, you know, reiterate to people that it is just adding one new residence. There's already been a home on that property for, well, close to a hundred years. It was built nineteen thirty. And we are adding one new resident. There is two new homes, but one has been there for almost a hundred years. Anyway, the other thing I want to point out to Rita, if you could put up my little sketch. I'm not the best drawing. Draftsman here. It's a little- it's a legal notepad one. Yeah. I just wanted to point this out for everybody. That's kind of my little drawing of all the neighborhood addresses there, and there are the two proposed lot A and lot B here. Those will be the proposed new homes. Both of those have three-car garages, plus they'll have adequate driveways for people to park on a driveway too. So I don't think we're adding. We're trying not to add any more cars parked on the road on Waterberry, other than occasionally on a holiday. The other residents, with all with the exception of Zach and Amanda here, they do not have a garage. They do have a double-deep driveway, so in the- from November to April, when you can't park overnight, they park double-deep in their driveway. So I believe out of convenience, they don't do that in the summertime because one has to back up to let the other one in and out. It's kind of a hassle factor for them. But the other residents all have driveways and two-car garages. So, you know, which is typical. And so in my opinion, they have come in and have complained, and that's fine. I have no problem with people raising concerns. They live there. I get that. Here, you know, here comes Mike Greer in to build some homes, and and they can voice their concerns to me and to the city, and they've done that. But I don't feel that, you know, we're adding to that. We've tried to make sure that we're not going to be caught, be part of a problem. And that if they choose to drive or park in the in the street, that's their choice, and they're doing that out of convenience. But they do have other options to park in their garages or their driveways. And so I just want that to be taken into consideration. We're not trying to be part of the problem. And we understand it's a dead end, and I'm very familiar with building on dead ends, and I I'm very confident we can do a nice job. And I stay in really close communication with the neighbors. I'm not a bad guy. They'll have my cell phone number. They already do. And my number is on my board that I put up. It's like a four-by-four board that's going to have the construction rules. And really, one of the neighbors mentioned a complaint about parking for construction. Well, my crews typically just work from seven to three-thirty, maybe four-thirty, Monday through Friday. There's an occasional sub that might work there on a Saturday, but that's rare. So most of the time, when they're at work during the day, they'll be parking on the street, but they go home then at night. So it's not a constant, you know, interruption. I realize that I'm not trying to interrupt people's lives, but I do have to build a house, and like I said at the planning commission meeting, their house had to be built once too. So everybody has to share a little bit of the pain once in a while to have a house built. But I do work really, really hard to make sure that it doesn't inconvenience people and that we're not obnoxious or do things that are, you know, a nuisance or bothers them to them. And we work really hard at that. The other thing I'm going to make sure that I do is I won't overload the project. So for instance, I'm going to schedule people accordingly. I won't have everybody coming at once. I'm going to pace everybody out in a comfortable build schedule so we don't have to have a lot of parking in there. I'll also make sure that people are aware of this, and we've done this in the past. I let the owner, the, you know, my contact person with my subcontractor, know what's going on there up front and ask them to carpool whenever possible. So we do whatever we can do to minimize the amount of cars that are going to be there in an average workday. Let's see if there's anything else I wanted to touch on. I think that's it. If you have questions for me, yeah.
Does council have any questions?
I know in both meetings, emergency vehicle access has been ongoing. And you don't feel that this second house is going to cause any new restrictions for?
No, and that's another, I, you know, it's a good question, very good question. And I, you know, I'm not pretending to be an expert on this, although I did some research on the DOT website. And I stopped at the fire department and measured one of their fire trucks too. And so I made this little sketch. I didn't get time to get that over. I apologize. But it's a little sketch of the width of the road. And the width of the road, like I say, curb to curb is twenty-six and a half feet. An average passenger vehicle, I can pass this around to you folks, and there's a little stuff that I, on the back here, where I got that information off the DOT website here. It shows it on the back. It has a little guide to the vehicle width, both trucks and semis and everything. So I went off of that, off the DOT website. And so here I'm showing an example of a passenger car and a truck because one of the neighbors, who has not complained, has a delivery truck that he owns and does that delivery truck business. And so I took his truck into account because in the website, it says a truck with extended mirrors for towing. So I figured that would be the same width as what his truck is like. And so if you take those two, a truck and a car, and you subtract those away from the width of the road, you're still left with ten-foot-ten. The width of a semi with the extended mirrors on the DOT website says it ranges between eight foot six and nine foot maximum. That's what's allowed on the roads for semi drivers to have a truck on the on the public street in the state of Minnesota. And it said that an average fire truck is eight foot to nine feet wide. So that still leaves some room to get through there. Now, you know, according to my calculations, a truck can get through there. And on my little other, there is a fire hydrant right at the end of the street. And so, you know, I mean, this would be the same situation regardless of a number of streets that are in mound. They're dead-end roads. They have homes on both sides of the of the road. And I don't know because I don't, you know, live on a dead-end street in mound, but if there's been any issues with that or not. But like I said, I have three-car garages proposed, and I have driveways for both of the homes proposed. So I don't I don't see the need for people to be parking in the street for those two homes.
I live on a road.
Are parking on the street now, I I believe it's been for convenience and choice during the summer.
I I live on a road just like that too, and there's there's plenty of room.
Yeah.
For the.
You don't work okay?
I mean, there's room for the, an emergency vehicle to go.
Yeah, that's what I came up with my math. I mean, it's a concern. Like I say, I understand. If a neighbor comes in and has a concern, I'm all in on that. I don't want people to feel like I'm just coming into their home and into their neighborhood and, you know, just jamming something in there. I've listened to what they've said, and I've tried to do my homework and looked at it objectively to see if that's, you know, if there's anything that I can do other than I have done. So I'm confident that it'll be it'll be just fine.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is not a public comment, although I know we typically tape quick comments, so if there's anybody who wants to make a quick comment, we're not. All right, here it is. All right, so I got a resolution on page thirteen oh nine. Can I get a motion to approve that? Actually, with sans number sixteen, and then we can add that back in later. Okay, so motion to approve the resolution on thirteen oh nine sans sixteen.
I can do that, and like Rita had said earlier, we're just approving the subdivision portion. So I would like to make a resolution approving a two lot minor subdivision of property at five one two three Waterberry Road, planning case two four dash zero four, omitting number sixteen, condition number sixteen to be resolved later.
Okay, got a motion. Can I get a second?
A second to motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Congrats.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, now we're on number nine, surfside parking lot striping and parking curbs. And I just sent you an email too. Can you check your email or no?
Not on here. I can plug it in though, if you want me to. Is it?
This is a picture.
Regarding this.
You can do a picture. Do you want to come up and just tell us, do you know anything about surfside and kind of what happened this weekend?
So, excuse me, so our police department came up with a solution. We put up signage trailers that have a display that tells us what you can and can't do. We put them up all over. Also, we worked with the public works to get cones out to, so people could visually see there is no room for trailers here. Seemed to do the trick with what I got from my staff and from our officers working through the weekend. We had thirteen spot checks with no violation. There was one citation issued. But we continually went through, rolled through that lot this weekend, and we seemed to have had that problem solved for now. Other, I don't know if it was the weather or if it was what we had put in place prior to this weekend that assisted that.
When you say spot checks, what does that mean?
Spot checks are typically our officers will, if there's downtime, if we're not on a priority call or have a priority call waiting for us, they will take their time to go and find an area that needs, would be maybe considered directed patrol where myself as a supervisor or comes down from the chief that, hey, we need to watch this area closely. And my officers get that through email or through my direction at night or during the day, and they'll go and take some time to either take a walk through there, take a drive through there, just check things as they need it.
So over the two days, thirteen times, you guys did the rounds?
Yep, and this, the stats that I got are a little skewed because we ran into an issue where our officers, typically when we go out on a check, we can hit a button on our computers, and it fill generates and drops a GPS location, which can range from this area to this area. So what we've found and a directive's been put in place is from here on out, the guys put in surfside, and it populates as nine-nine-nine surfside so that we now can condense all that information that the officers are gathering on their spot checks into one spot.
Okay. Did you get, is it going to work or no?
Yep.
I thought you did a great job down there this weekend. I thought you did a great job down there this weekend. I thought the sign and the cones were great. And then I know there was that big issue manhunt, you know, first thing in the morning that
Yes, we had a.
Officer couldn't get the things in that say, you know, single-vehicle parking only. And I think it was partially the weather. There wasn't a lot of activity down there. But I think that's, you know, people can't read that, and that or that person you gave the citation to, Officer Senek and Thomas had already called to get that towed. The balls he had to park in that spot all day was was unreal. You know, there's nobody there, and he pulls up and takes up twelve spots and pulls up horizontally on it. So they called to get it towed, and then somebody in Chapman Place called. We watched him call, and he showed up right before the tow truck did. But, you know, I think so up until this point, they used to tow for years. The last five or six years, there have been no toes. And we, I've understood now, I talked to Officer Beenick and also Officer Sonic down there, and they said, you know, your hands are kind of tied in a lot of instances to tow. That's why that's changed because we didn't use. That's why that's changed, because we didn't use to have this problem when the towing happened. But I think this is a great solution. Um, Memorial Day was a bust kind of for weather, but you know, as the things warm up, I think it's a great solution. I hate to see us put, you know, we've been doing this forever. I hate to see us change it. I think enforcement is key. All three officers also said, the most important thing will be to get, you know, like a field officer down there or a peace officer for the first month, just until people understand that we mean business, that we're not gonna allow this to happen anymore. And then hopefully it'll, you know, take care of itself. But I thought you guys did a great job.
Thank you. We just, so you, uh, council knows that we are implementing our CSO, will start June first. Um, his dates will be June first, eighth, twenty-third and twenty-ninth. He will work eleven hundred, or excuse me, eleven AM to five PM.
So one eighth?
Sorry, the first, the eighth, twenty-third and twenty-ninth.
And eleven to five?
Eleven to five through the day. And that will include him checking for those, um, independent businesses that are coming in to rent.
Yep. And did you get a copy of what the registration looks like?
Yes, um, supposedly we're working with a QR code also. They're supposed to be developing one. And from what I was briefed by my chief, that, this, this is supposed to cover everything in our, that city. So if there's a, uh, or no, or excuse me, a mount owned, um, launch, they, they can't go down there, bypass here and go down to the other one, like on Three Points or whatever, if there's one down there. So does that make sense? That's what I was told.
The QR, what are you talking about with the QR?
Well, the, the whole, like the law or the ordinance and stuff for that, for Surfside does apply across Mount for any, um,
Yeah, for any of the public.
Access. So they can't bypass us being there to go and launch at another one.
They can, but.
They have, they have.
But if someone does call in a complaint, we can respond and do that.
They have already gotten cagey, you know, they, they discovered a launch at the end of Tuxedo, you know? And then they were using Swenson Park to do their staging. Then they went down to the end where, you know, there's always a Minatrista policeman there. There's nowhere to park down there. But yeah, they've been doing that the last couple of weekends, so.
And we found they're bypassing us and going to Maxwell and North Armville, so that's.
Hey, you know what? We're, it's solving our problem. So that's the good news.
Yep. So, uh, you had any questions? I did, you know, like I said, I can try to answer as much about this as I can. Um, all I know is we went out and did this. It seems to be a good, good start.
Great solution.
And I, I promise you, our guys make constant rounds through there. And like I said, we just ran into a hiccup with how they're labeling it within our CAD system. And our, um, office staff can't get it to dump into a, a single file until we get everybody on board with that, so.
I don't know if you know the answer to this and, um, Officer Sonic, I think his name was Sonic. And then Thomas, what does the ticket cost?
Um, I'm not sure it's a.
Forty bucks, because you know.
I heard thirty.
That's not really any consequence at all for somebody who'd rather not walk four blocks to that. So I like the towing thing, but I understand the towing, which used to work beautifully. And I'm not sure what you can decide what can be towed and what can't, because the Orlando truck that was there both weekends, the last two weekends, um, they got the tow, they called Williams, but I'm not sure why they decided that was okay, but not all would be okay.
Yes, I, I don't know what, what.
Jesse, maybe you know.
So I sat down with the chief with Jesse the other day. And, um, you're, you're right, the, it's like, is a state thing that it's like a thirty-five, forty dollar fee. So for them, it's the cost of a good day on the lake going fishing. So a lot of people just don't care.
No, they don't care.
Some people will just park there. They'll come back to their car for something. They'll say, oh, there's a ticket. And they'll put it in their car and they're shut. So then we drive by and say, oh, there's no tickets. No, you already got one. So they come back again. Did, no, he just, it said that just happened this last weekend that they tried to re-ticket them again. No, you already just got a ticket. He just hadn't moved his car yet. So if you ask me, that's not a deterrent, forty bucks. And it's, what did they say? A pesti, pest?
Petty.
Petty misdemeanor. So in other words.
That's why towing would, would be a consequence.
Well, we talked about that too, and I, I don't remember what he said on that, but it wasn't much of a solution either.
I think it's a space thing too. I mean, it's just cumbersome to be taking vehicles with trailers.
With a trailer, yeah.
You know, the, you have to have a place to take them essentially.
What can we raise the ticket price?
It's like a state thing or something.
Oh, is that right?
It's not, we can't do any of it. So we were brainstorming with the chief and, um, obviously, you know, he's heard us that this is a thorn in our side. Um, obviously, in the last couple of weeks now, it's been pretty serious. You guys down there all the time giving tickets and stuff. Um, because of that meeting, you know, this is the result of it. Can you go to the next page too? So then you can't really see the green cones, but there they are. So we put cones on every single one saying, don't park here now. I know you can just move that. So I, I just wanna have a little debate about what people think about, first of all, that. Uh, second of all, do you guys wanna put concrete, or what do they call it, like rubber concrete barriers? Basically, so you can't park a trailer in there? You wanna be able to have trailer parking during the week?
Of course.
So here.
I think this was a great solution.
Okay, and I do too, I, I, I don't know if it's a good long-term solution. So the second we not do this, then they're gonna come back.
Right. And the other thing is, I think this weekend, because it's new, any car coming in this way, they'd have to back into the parking space, because these are meant to drive through.
Yeah, it's backwards.
They'd have to, so I'm not sure if a lot of cars really, in fact, a couple of the officers asked several people that parked on the side, did you realize you could park here? And they're like, well, no. But I think once people understand, I think those orange signs on top of cones say it all. You know, it's single vehicle parking is allowed.
I like the, like, I walk by there all the time and I went by there over the weekend and it was great. I mean, there was, that wasn't full of trailers, but, so the plan is to keep trailer parking during the week, just not on the weekend.
Like it's always.
So we can't really put concrete bear, cause I, I thought the concrete, if it was just gonna be a permanent parking lot, like then putting those concrete things there would be good, but when I look by on the weekend, it looks like if I were driving there to go, like the cones, if I was in a car, I'd be like, can I park there?
Right.
Like it looks like no one can park there. It looks like it's blocked off for like an event.
I'd like to see continued enforcement before, you know, going to any greater measures to, to mess with the parking lot.
Cause in the summer when it's busy.
And see if we can retrain people.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Well, it's through November.
Yeah, yeah.
We go to November.
I'm like, I don't know if it's a good, I mean, it, it's, it's working, but it just looks uninviting, like, oh, I shouldn't go park there in my car, you know, even though you can.
Well, again, this was a one weekend thing. This doesn't mean we're doing this every weekend. This was a holiday weekend. Hey, by the way, we, you know, you can't do this here. And of course, nobody voted this weekend except for me. So, and then even if we just said, hey, no trailer parking at all, which we technically could, could do, we would wanna stripe them the other way, horizontal. The diagonal thing's not gonna work. But you're right. I mean, with, with the long parking spots, I don't think people know, cars know that they can park there. I mean, some, you'll see them there. Some people know that. And I think once one or two do, they go, oh, I can do that too.
Yeah, but the cones make you think you can.
The cones make you think that's game off, you know, it's like the spirit of life is coming to town or something. So this, I don't like doing this longer term. I do like it as a one or two weekend thing. Hey, by the way, we don't do this. It doesn't matter though, cause two weeks from then, or two weeks from then, or next year, you're still gonna have some random person like me that comes up with a trailer and tries to park there and doesn't look at the sign. So at the end of the day, it's all about you guys staying on that area and still enforcing it.
But I think the long-term goal is like to have them stay on it and enforce it, but hopefully a little bit less. Like if we had a better signage solution, they wouldn't have to be down there as much.
Well, and, and again, we're gonna try this guy for a month, um, the CSO, so that'll be good. But, you know, if we have him sitting in the corner, we don't really need to be doing all this and being obnoxious with a sign you know, at our launch every weekend.
Are there like, I don't know what word to use, but like in lieu of a neon cone, like a more, uh, I don't know, a sign that was like, looks like it's supposed to be there, like in the parking lot, you know, that?
Well, it would have to be movable.
Well, yeah, yeah, I know. I don't have any ideas.
You could say cars only parking.
And that's what the orange signs say.
Yeah, okay.
Again, it's just retraining. And, and I, I'd love to see the month of just regular, um, enforcement to see if we can retrain.
Yeah, I want cars to know they can park there.
Yeah, I, I do too. I, I was down there several times and pulled, pulled, but I had a truck. But I pulled in just so people could see you can park there. But I think once people do, that'll be helpful. But yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be a retraining thing for sure.
Is the plan to leave that, um, police trailer there for a long?
That moves around, it goes where it's needed. It's a, um, so if we have some, like, uh, festivities going on somewhere other, outside this area, it might be there directing the other way. Um, but you know, if it's available, it's just a request to, um, the chief or, you know, our, our CSO, Josh, he can always set something up.
Well, pass along that you did a great job this weekend.
Appreciate it. So, and you know, just, you know, we, I wanna make, reiterate that, you know, the guys are, and gals are not skipping it. We are, um, going through it, but we end up with, we have to prioritize calls. And if we have something on domestic or something happen, it's the last thing on our list. It's, it's not something, it's just, if I have an officer that's prioritizing a four call over a one call, I have, that's not them doing their job right. So there's issues there. So that's what I would like you guys to understand. We will, our spare time between calls, I, I know just watching my, my stuff that I had, they were constantly making loops through there this weekend. And one of my officers always makes a loop on her last, uh, go around before she heads north for the night, so.
Yeah, maybe this is the best solution. I just didn't really have any, anything else, but to make it look like you can park there.
Well, again, these cones aren't gonna be there for, so this is a very, very temporary thing.
And I think our CSO being there, I think he could direct them that, hey, you guys can park there and then that might educate them eventually over time and give them knowledge, so. I think the month of our CSO will help out down there, so.
All right. Any other comments from you or?
I only would offer that we talked about striping. I mean,
Yeah.
if you see stripes, you know that it's, can fit two vehicles.
Yep.
I mean, a trailer, if somebody with a trailer wants to park, they're still gonna do what they did over the weekend when there was cones and a sign. And they would obviously do that over stripes in the, in the middle of the week, but I don't know if that's just adding more confusion or not. I, I mean, cause I agree that if it's marked a little more clearly, you would realize you could park there with a car.
Yeah, what if you put down, like you're saying, put down white stripes and then during the week, you just pull the cones off and then?
Well, I, I would just.
And I don't, I don't.
If you, is there some, I know they do this in like Europe or something where they do like a diagonal line that knows that it's a full one, but it's also a partial one? Do, what, what's street law around here with that?
I'm not aware of anything like that.
Okay.
Part of the rules, there, there's things like rubber curves or something, bolt down curves, things you can put, put on and probably possibly take off that could not volunteer in the parks group or something like that, but something that can be put down for the weekend and then held up.
But I think what Jesse was saying, and I would maybe wanna think about is like, you, you put the white striping down, and then eventually those cones aren't gonna be there. And then people with a trailer would just have to know that they can park there during the week. But it might be a little bit of a deterrent.
Yeah, that makes sense.
On the weekend, you know, cause then on the weekend, we don't have the cones anymore. We just have the spots where they're like, you know, it looks like two cars and you kinda have to, I guess, be a bigger jerk to just still park your trailer there.
A yellow line or something?
So, yeah.
Not white, so, I don't know, maybe you, is there, there's gotta be someone out there that has had this problem? That shares a parking spot.
Cause having lines there does make it, it, you know, it makes it very clear that it's two, it's two parking spots. It's not just a boat trailer spot.
Or do you not go all the way around, over and you just, you give a foot or two on each side, so it doesn't look like it's a full block off? You know what we're trying to say?
Like a dashed, dashed line or something like that?
That's, yeah, like a dashed line almost.
Yeah, I, I think, um, psychologically, the best answer is gonna be a sign that has certain times on it, similar to like a no parking on the street, two AM to, to six AM or something like that.
Write that on the parking spot?
May, yeah.
Like in paint?
That could be
Okay.
the answer. So there's no way to miss it if you're driving over the top of it.
Can we look into what that looks like? If you did like no parking on the weekend, however you wanna verbiage that out?
I think we have to remember too that, you know, I've got three years of taking pictures of vehicles. These are repeat offenders. They all know they aren't supposed to be parking there on weekends. So I really think, before we go to all this expense and all this money, I think we need to just see what happens in the month of June.
Okay.
And, and see if we can, you know, get it, you know, get these people that are the repeat offenders to understand that, you, you know, we're taking this seriously and we actually are going to enforce it. And then I think if, if we still are failing at the end of June, then we can look at more permanent solutions.
It's probably a good idea.
Because there will be an expense to doing that.
I, I don't see the difference of getting what some paint and some letters would cost. So at the end of the June, when this doesn't work, then we can talk about it.
Yeah, paints, paints the cheapest and you can always paint it black if you don't like it. Cover it up again.
I mean, get a stencil and go there and paint. Can you just give us some ideas?
We need to fog seal it pretty soon anyway, so cover it up if we don't like it. Try again.
Perfect.
Again, at the end of the day, we're still gonna have these issues. It's, there's always gonna be people that park there. At some point, we just have to come up with a solution and move on with our lives. We can't keep confronting police officers on our own. We're like, we're a council, we're, uh, not, that's not our job. So whether you wanna take pictures or confront officers or something, I mean, that's not appropriate. We need to have you guys figuring this out, but we also gotta set good policies so you guys can enforce what we're trying to do here. So, and I'm not asking for your opinion on that, but I'm just saying, I, I'm sure you guys want something to know what we're supposed to be doing here. So anyway, appreciate that, so. Any other comments or suggestions? Thank you.
I know you're working hard on it.
Thanks for waiting through the whole rest of the.
I see, I see.
You see all the diagonal things? Yeah, no parking during the weekend. Yeah, I think that's.
All right, uh, now we're on number ten. Council reports, uh, council member Pugh?
Um, I have nothing to report.
Council member, uh, McInnes? Okay, council member Casalino?
Yeah, I had a few things, but I organized my notes very well. Jesse, I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but do you still have that crosswalk video, like in an email that I sent you recently? It's like a two minute link?
Believe so.
I don't know if we can, you guys can entertain me and we can look at it really quick, but I'm not sure how, how married to the, the idea of it I am, but just considering we have a few crosswalks right in downtown. We're adding Artesso, we're adding, uh, the City Park. There's Grandview. I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of Grandview, Shoreline and one ten. Sorry, Jesse, I should've sent this to you. I can probably find it too, but it's just a one and a half minute video of, uh, another city that kinda came up with a pretty creative solution.
You have anything else besides that?
Yeah, two more things. Um, I also, I wanted to call for, um, a workshop on Just Deeds. They sent us that racial covenant review like a month ago, maybe two months ago. Uh, but I'd like to review that, uh, before putting it on a council agenda. I think that would be good. Personal experience, just reviewing that with, um, YZ, I mean, we kinda tackled that maybe a year and a half ago. It didn't sound like it was a very difficult project.
Okay.
They do a lot of the work. It's maybe a little bit of our staff time. I, I don't know what, what the timeline looks like on that, but I don't know. I just need to have a second for the workshop, right?
I'd make a second.
Okay. Okay, we'll do a workshop.
Considering City Hall on one of those properties?
We, if, it depends on the night, but, or the day, but
Yeah.
we also wanna talk about the police service, so, right? I think we had two last time, at least two. So I don't know what works for people, but we can, we gotta figure out the time to do both of these.
Well, we have, we meet on the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. I know Leslie from Just Deeds, who would like to be here for that conversation. If we have it, would be available on the eleventh, so if that. If we have it, would be available on the eleventh. So, if that worked to have them, I, I guess I'd just leave it to the council to decide.
June eleventh, you're saying?
June eleventh, yes. But I defer to council on what dates you prefer.
So, you're talking about before our meeting? So, at five o'clock?
Right, unless you wanted to do an off night or something. But if it were to be before the meeting, five would be, probably be as early as we could go.
Can you give a refresher course on what this deeds thing is?
So, Just Deeds is, I don't know what the right, they're, they're a nonprofit, but they will go through, I think in their email, there was seventy-eight properties, um, through mound. Wayzata and Plymouth have already done it. But in these developments, um, like chunks of mound, they provided us a map to, like this development, this development, City Hall is on it, Shirley Hills is on one. But there's still like racial covenants in the property deeds.
So, this is about racial covenants?
Yeah, that will, you know, this property can be only sold to certain, certain people.
Do we have a reason to do this?
Um, to a reason to do it?
To get rid of them.
Take it rid of it.
Yeah, they're just on the deeds. They're, they're not, you know, they're not enforceable.
I just need to read, uh, read them. Thank you.
Yeah, like they're not enforceable. It's more of just cleaning up and getting, getting rid of them.
Okay.
So, Just Deeds is a, is an organization that was started by, there was, I know, um, the Golden Valley City Attorney was pivotal in start, in starting the organization. And so, it uses volun, volunteer attorneys to come in and go, uh, work with private property owners to clean up the properties. Uh, the title, they were these racial covenants that it like was mentioned. They're not enforceable, or religious too, but those restrictive covenants are, are not enforceable anymore. They're religious, they're, you know, they're, they're, um, basically they're from a era a long time ago.
Okay.
And, um, my understanding is that it's really these, this, these, this organization and the volunteer attorneys that are getting the work done. And they just, they partner with the cities because the cities have the ability to get the, uh, information out there. And that's, that's really, I believe, what the partnership is. But that's what the workshop will be about.
I'll, I'll add too that they just require a resolution of support from a city that sort of unlocks the pro bono work from the attorneys. And also Hennepin County, a recorder's office then waives fees related to wa, to removing these covenants. So, the city is, that's sort of the city's involvement in it, getting the word out and then waiving those fees for people.
So, I mean, this is kinda testing our start time, I suppose. Like a five o'clock workshop is early, but I mean, the eleventh or the twenty-fifth works for me or on an off night too, it'd be fine.
I'll try to read the clock better this time too.
So, until daylight savings.
Well, should we just say the eleventh then?
Sure.
Everybody go with that for now? What the, what the Councilmember Larson?
And then on the twenty-fifth, right?
Well, we were, we just, yeah, eleventh or the twenty-fifth?
Well, we gotta do the police. You guys go with that?
Well, so we have a workshop in the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth is for what, police?
Yeah. Show up at five for the next two council meetings.
Plus the eighteenth.
What's that?
Six PM on the eighteenth. We were talking about, uh, scheduling, having Ellers here for our.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And on the eighteenth, Tuesday, the eighteenth at six, we have to do our finance workshop. So, put that on there too. Can you send out those three dates?
Yes.
To everybody and include the attorney?
Is that the Ellers thing, Tuesday, the eighteenth?
Yes.
I figure you don't, probably don't need it, maybe at the eighteenth, cause it's financial.
We'll just look at how much.
Yeah, I don't wanna be over there for that.
Alright, so do you wanna show this one?
Yeah, so like, okay, so that is enough about that. But, uh, th, this is like a two-minute video and I'm honestly just curious about all of your guys' feedback, if you think this is feasible or not.
This container is where you will find orange flags like this one. And this flag may save your life when crossing streets like this one.
I think it looks good.
You think, you think you would do it?
Sure.
It's a simple idea to avoid getting hit by a car on a crosswalk. Six downtown York locations now have crosswalk flags. You grab one from a basket and walk across the street while carrying it. The idea is to increase visibility and safety.
I think that this is gonna be a genius move. It's, it takes two seconds to pick up a stick that has a bright orange flag.
According to Downtown Inc., research from other cities shows more cars stopper people with flags than those without them.
I think it's better, better option than nothing.
Now, the Transportation Research, Research Board has determined that these orange flags are eighty percent effective in stopping traffic when people are crossing the sidewalk here. And it's in Houston, a lot of big cities across the country, including Salt Lake City, Utah, Seattle and Washington DC. In York, Ed White, Stock, W G A L News Eight.
So, I kind of envisioned them as like the same color as those surfside cones, like a big day glow flag you can just hold in front of you and you don't have to use it. It seemed like a pretty cheap project. I don't think it requires a lot to implement. I'm sure some of those flags will grow legs and get stolen and can be replaced, but. I don't know. Wanted to see what your, what all of your appetite was for that. Even when the crosswalks are done, I mean, they're just wide and busy.
As a pedestrian, I don't trust anything but myself looking for traffic. So, I wouldn't want any of my kids thinking they're safe grabbing one of those, thinking anybody's gonna stop for them. I, I, you know, I, those are problem crosswalks.
For sure.
I just don't know if this would give anybody any sense of reassure, you know, reassured that somebody's gonna stop for them.
Yeah, I mean, like you're, to your point, I wouldn't expect it, like if someone's not gonna stop and they're not paying attention, but if it makes you more visible was my, you know.
And there is something about making the crosswalks visible, because there are people who, if you said there was a crosswalk, um, at the shopping center by Wells Fargo, go to the cross street, they tell you, no, there isn't. Because visually, they don't even see it as it exists. Um, and so, you know, in, in different studies they've done around the country, doing different things with crosswalks, painting them differently, um, this flag issue, there are ways of getting people to identify with the crosswalk and its existence. So, it could be fun for a while. It might not be the end all, but it certainly could draw attention.
Yeah, I'm not married to it. I just thought it might be a good idea.
What about the different color paint? Cause I go down other cities and, you know, oh, I've got different things going on.
Some of them have lights too at the road level. They're like, uh, you see in your car.
Yeah, I wanted bicycles on the crosswalks for Commerce and Shoreline, where the bikes cross. And I've seen ones where they have like brick roads, um, artistic designs, yeah, so.
Do you wanna come up real fast? So, remember, we do have a road policy per se, as we implement things. We have to go through the study that we came up with. But is this something that we could add to your list of, is there anything paint-wise or cross, I mean, any thing that you have to say about that?
There, there's a myriad of things that could be done. There's, I think the brick thing you're talking about is like, uh, um, kinda like an overlay almost. That there's different, um, it's not necessarily paint. It's, I think it's.
Brick.
Not really, it's not true brick either. It's like something that gets heated on. I can't, off the top of my head, tell you exactly what it is, but the, there are different, different things that, that can be done. We could put together kind of a, a list for you guys to review of some things that are out there. I think a lot of the issue here is gonna be most of what you're mentioning is county roads. So, you know, they're gonna have to buy off on it and approve it to go on in those places and then, um, figure out maintenance for that. If that's the city staff to, to take care of that type of stuff or.
So, once this, uh, crossing, uh, Shoreline gets installed, do we remember, is there paint? I know there's the pork chop thing, but is there paint? Or is it just the overhead light? Remember?
Uh, off the top of my head, I do not remember.
I gotta think there's paint.
I think it, it's a little different because it's a, it's a bike trail, so it's mainly meant for bicycles. I don't know if it's gonna have crosswalk blocks or not.
Anyway, can you, can you add some stuff, maybe some colored photos of like what this could look like and?
Yeah, and just share that, it kind of is a.
Yeah, then obviously, you know, what's the challenge to implement on, is there any studies or anything that say that these actually do anything? Just whatever you can find without spending too much time on air again.
Okay.
Just at least we can talk about it again.
Yep, we can put that together.
And Jesse, if you can put on the agenda or something. Um, the, the actual flags, I mean, yeah, you're right, they're all gonna get stolen. I can imagine all the kids. But I do understand, and one of my friend's kid got hit by a car right where you're talking about, um, your, so, well. So, I mean, it's definitely important. That's, again, part of why I'm sitting up here is that crosswalk that I'm still waiting on. Getting, getting in, thanks my council, but.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, once it's in, it'll be great. I will say since the start and this, you were there when I was talking about it. I said, we're missing the boat if we don't talk about the other one.
Yeah.
And we never talked about the other one. And this was previous council, but.
On one-ten?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you still got, you fixed that problem, but then you still got the other problem over here. And maybe some of this could be a, a half solution for, I mean, the, the costs and, a, again, for whatever reason, we didn't go down that road. But I, I, I think it was a workshop and I said, we have to do both. We can't do just one. We have to do both. Those are the two in our town. But we're doing one. So, I don't know. You know, with the stoplight there, it's really tough to do it.
We have to get the county to do it, cause it's a county road.
Well, it's the three of us again.
Yeah, right. But I think one-ten has many problems, because one-ten has, um, Commerce, um, Shoreline intersection. It has the Commerce bike path crossing. Then it has, um, what, you know, Lake, um, Old Lake Shore. And going the other way, it's, you know, if you're going north, you've got the entrance to the shopping center. Then you've got the library and, and then further down the school. So, there are a lot of intersections there. I've often wondered, in Wayzata, I noticed that they put crosswalks at every intersection on the Old Lake Street. Now, that, that's sort of the bypass, but, but I always wondered, has it helped in slowing down traffic?
They put the, um.
I go down there every day.
They put the state law pedestrian sign thing. Maybe that would be a better idea if we had those everywhere. I mean, do we have those out right now even?
We, well, that'd be a good idea for that main road, but again, they're all, they're gonna get trashed. There's people gonna run them over.
You know what I mean though? The ones like the big, heavy base.
They have those for slow roads. That works perfect.
Yeah.
So, right on my way home, I hit one or two, you know, then people come across and just stop. Other people stopped and I'm like, you don't have to stop unless there's someone there.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's better that they stop than they don't.
Yeah.
You know? But that would be a good idea. I don't know if that's something we can even do with the, with the county, but.
We can ask, see what their, what their policy is.
See what you can find out with crosswalk, especially that one. But then maybe, you know, even a temporary solution for the other one until this actually gets done here, hopefully the fall or early in the spring, I guess. I think it just would be good to, you know, maybe, maybe put it out there that we're trying to do a little something more than we need to. And, you know, like the flags maybe aren't the best idea, but if it gets us to something, it's fine.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Any other things?
Um, yeah, um. Okay, we already talked about trailer parking, so. So, I think pretty soon, and I, you know, I don't have all the details tonight that I should. Uh, but just to get the ball rolling, I think it's something we're probably gonna have to talk about more often pretty soon. But I'd probably look for an assist from Jesse and Scott for this too. But we should probably start keeping up more on what the state is doing with cannabis licensing and figuring out what we wanna do as a city, cause that legislative session just ended. What?
Perfect, perfect timing. Perfect timing. I, the, I just was, I sent an email out to, to staff today, um, about the changes legislatively that occurred. So, we're looking into that right now. I mean, so there is, um, based, basically what we're looking at is early cultivation. That's the only thing really that, that can happen. Um, and so, we're gonna be reviewing city code to see what needs to be done. Some other cities represent, let's just say one city already did something, but that was even before this, the law passed. They just were, got ahead of the game. So, in any event, staff is looking at that. Um, we're still waiting for the Office of Cannabis Management to put out, um, model ordinances. That, and that's for the licensing. And that won't happen until sometime in twenty-twenty-five, so we have time. But, um, they were supposed to, supposedly, we're supposed to get model ordinances like really soon under the law, but I don't see that happening.
Okay.
So, which means that, and we won't be the, we won't be the first city, the, the cities in the metro probably and so on, other ones represent will start putting together what they wanna put together. We'll, we'll, we can pair it off of that or give examples of what's going, of what's going on. And then once the Office of Cannabis Management starts putting things out at some point, we can always amend those ordinances. So, that, that's kinda where we're at right now is, is, and it was today, the league came out with saying that with the guard to cultivation, you may want to review your code and talk and look at your zoning code and those kind of things. So, we're, we're, we're working on behind the scenes.
So, like, uh, um, not just cultivation, but like as a dispensary too?
My understanding from that, that is just cultivation right now. There is no, there is no license to, to be a dispensary right now.
Okay, so we don't have any, any deadlines looming over our head about needing to get, okay, cause I know that the state decided like if it was twelve thousand, probably hundred people or less, you know, one license.
Right, that, that, but no early license. They, I think the rationale for the cultivation is they need something to sell once they actually do the licenses. That's, and you only can sell, my understanding is anything that's been grown in Minnesota. So.
From seed to sales, what they're calling it.
Yeah, so if there is no cultivation license early, then you, you, and once you give the licenses, it's like another delay. That's what they're, they're, they're looking at. So, um, what, but anyways, that, that came out today. Um, I've been in contact with staff on that and, uh, we will be discussing those items that need to be, if there's any changes that need to be made. I believe, I don't have it in front of me, it was sometime in July, it was when the, the, the cultivation could start. I think it was near the end of July. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay, my, I guess my main question was, so I have like the O C M's last presentation and they were saying municipalities pursuing licensure are exempt from the lottery process if they're gonna have a lottery process. But like, we don't even know, we're not anywhere near to that point yet. Like, the state's just looking at cultivation right now.
That's my thing. So, I'm just gonna take a quick look here.
I just didn't want to, you know, get caught behind on something that we should.
Yep, and that's, and I've been, I, 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 I did send that out. So, that came out, like I said, that came out today from league and it was brand new. I get that, cause I, I get an email. It's like the league updates and that was right, you probably saw that too. It's right on top, so.
Okay.
And I. I'm trying to look, um, so we were, we were, I'm just trying to see what, if I can see.
Feel like I'm regurgitating what, what Rita said before about like the concept plan, like just for discussion?
Yeah, so it says here legislative, the legislation requires the O C M to begin accepting applications for soc, social equity applicants on July twenty-fourth. The applicants closing on August twelfth, twenty-twenty-fourth, so I don't know about, okay. So, what we're gonna do, so there is time, cause that's the concern too. But what we will do is, we are doing is taking a look at what the new legislation is. Let's take a look, um, at our city code. We'll take a look at some other cities have done too, for as an example and see, and then have, uh, suggested changes that for the, for the council. And if it's zoning related, then obviously we'll go through the planning commission, then to the council. So, they said there is some time, but you know, it's better to jump on it now that we know.
Okay.
So, we'll fight and speak out of churn. Okay.
Anything else?
Alright, um, you, I don't know if people have heard, but the bonding bill didn't happen. Not good for us, but not good for anybody. So, nobody got money from that. End of story. So, we'll keep fighting for next year. Um, remember we put in for the, uh, was it four or three for the federal?
Three point one.
Three point one. Uh, so we got that, um, through, uh, the federal side. So, hope, hopefully, uh, we'll get approved on that. Again, we submitted four last year and we got one, or just under one million.
Did you say three point one?
Uh, three point one million is what we.
Uh, three point one million is what we s- uh, got accepted or submitted for, the congressionally directed spending.
Yeah.
That was, uh, was it Congressman Phillips or was that?
Well.
Klobuchar?
Actually, both, it's back, it's been submitted on both sides and, so that's helpful.
Okay, but.
Phillips office.
Phillips was coordinating, yeah. Okay. That's all I got, besides, and then I just have a question for you when you do your part next. Uh, public work director, did we get any update on that yet?
We have, uh, an offer that, um, I thought today I'd hear about, but we're, we're planning on a mid-June start date, uh, actually, third week of June. Pending one final conversation with their employer, so.
Okay.
Keeping it, uh, pseudo-public for now, but, um, we'll send something out once paperwork's been signed and then. Next step will be to cart them out in front of the council and put them on the spot, I suppose.
How many applicants did you get for that position?
Not as many as we would hoped, um, it came out till seven, I think. But in asking around. I guess it wasn't that shocking, um, for a number of factor, or a number of reasons, but we're really happy with, uh, who we landed on, so. Sort of doesn't matter if you get a hundred or two, if they get a good one, so.
Good.
Uh, so number eleven, any other information from you? I know the fish fry is coming up Saturday.
Right, I, I would just say that most of it was covered, uh, among the conversations we had. We, speaking of the bonding bill, the, the money from last year, of course, like I mentioned, that, that's been signed into law, so I'm working with Matt. To sort of put together a game plan. We're really excited to just come here and start rocking and rolling, but. There are some hoops we need to jump through with the PFA, so. Soon here, we're gonna come back with some requests of the council to sort of lay out exactly how to move forward, because there's certain things we need to do in order to get reimbursed, other things we can just kind of do on the fly. It'll all make sense, but that's happening and we're just. We don't want to jump in at first and then tell you, you have to wait another three months before you hear from us again, so. That's coming, but it's, it's on the forefront as always, uh, but it's gonna be exciting and I'm sure very fast paced for a while there, but. Disappointing there wasn't a bonding bill, but like you said, it's not like anybody else got anything either.
Right, right.
Just want to let you know.
Okay, and again, that's top priority, it's just, behind the scenes, you guys are working through the details, so we can get something in front of us.
Correct.
Cool. Alright, does anybody else have anything else? Alright, well, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, alright, we're adjourned.